Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, July sixteenth. We are going to start our meeting. I will call the meeting to order. It is seven P M. So in person, we have myself and Wendy and on video, we have Susan and Sabina, and that is just enough to make a quorum. So first, we can review the agenda. I will go through the agenda and we'll see if we need any adjustments. So we'll begin with public comments. Then we will approve minutes from June eighteenth, which was our last meeting. Then after that, we plan to hear and discuss the Affordable Housing Committee comments on the modern by law modernization grant project so far.
Good draw.
Then your then your public comment related to the Affordable Housing Committee comments. After that discussion on the town planner hiring process. And then report out on events, liaison updates, farmers market table, then other business. And then wrap up and planning for next meetings, August sixteenth and August twentieth. And an executive session if needed, then adjourn. Do you see any reason to adjust the agenda?
I do not.
Sabina or Susan?
Not a.
Okay, perfect. So we will move forward with the meeting as planned. First, does the public have any comment related to any topic that you wish to address? Except those on the agenda that will come to next. Chuck Lacy, please step towards the microphone and identify.
I think we all know that the Housing Association agreements in Jericho are a real problem. There's hundreds of homes in Jericho that have them. Almost all of them have restrictive exclusionary housing commitments that the owners of the homes have made to each other. And they're basically neighborhoods that have decided to remove themselves from involvement with the town plan and the the town zoning ordinances by adding their own plans and their own ordinances. One of them is the Black Walnut, which has homeowners agreement, which has lots which are restricted to single family homes, although they made a recent amendment to permit A D U's where single family homes are the only option. There are many lots that are limited to only duplexes in a neighborhood where the conditional use can be three or four units and hopefully future amendments will allow more there. Rental housing is banned. Those people aren't allowed to rent their own homes, which effectively makes A D U's impractical and something that won't be built. They're now asking for the town to take over their road. And I think it's important for the town and for the planning commission to voice their opposition to the town taking over what is the road for what is a private community comprised of homeowners that have decided to remove themselves from the town ambitions as it relates to housing. And I think that we need to do use every opportunity to exercise leverage to encourage people in these homeowners agreements, most of whom have no idea about or don't fully understand the exclusionary agreements that they're participating in, but to really encourage them to make those changes. And second thing at your last meeting, there was another drawing, another Lego map showing all, you know, where all these new houses are going to go and infill. These are common, they're just comical. They just assume that people want to build a whole lot of houses in the front yard and in their backyard. I am an infill advocate. I think you should insist that you be looking at maps showing actual infill and actual neighborhoods. You are putting all your eggs, you've decided to put basically all your eggs in one basket, which was infill and three village centers, some of whom, some of which are much smaller and less dense than other neighborhoods in Jericho. And you know, I think you really need to be using actual evidence so that you can forecast how many more, how much, the actual potential for infill housing, which we know is more expensive than congregate and multifamily housing. Thanks.
Thank you. Is anyone else on Zoom? No, just us. Okay. S J, you're the only other public. Do you have any comments at this time? No. Okay. Hearing no other public comment, we will move on to approve the minutes of June eighteenth. Can I get a motion to approve the minute?
I have a motion to approve the minutes, June nineteenth.
Thank you, Wendy. Does anyone have any?
Oh, I'm ready for a second. Sorry. I'll hold off on my second until you say yours.
Go back to me on that one. Does anyone have any any changes that need to be made?
It'd be very helpful if the handouts were attached to the minutes.
The handouts from the meeting that, okay.
And the minutes refer over and over again to a handout that is not part of the minutes.
That's a constructive comment. Okay. Okay. Hearing no changes. Sabina?
I second the approval of the minutes.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Perfect. Okay, unanimous. Okay, moving on to our next topic. We are now going to hear and discuss Affordable Housing Committee comments on the bylaw modernization grant project. S J is going to come to the microphone.
Can I share?
Yeah. I encourage you to share.
It should work, S J. Let me know if it doesn't.
Okay, thanks Sabina. Does that look good for you guys?
That looks good.
Okay. Um, so in lieu of, well, two things. One, knowing that we're not the Planning Commission and it's not our job to write regulations. And two, we don't have kind of a red line draft to be going through at this point. I think what we wanted to do the last few months of discussion that the committee had is give you some recommendations and also perhaps a kind of rubric or impact analysis that you can take when you're looking at the regulations to do kind of a gut check on housing and infill and some of the questions that you can be asking as you're kind of wrestling with the the draft that's going to come before you and deciding what to keep, what to get rid of, what to change. But before we launch into this, I think it's important that every conversation that we have about housing, about regulation, about the town's growth, start with an acknowledgement that a investment in infrastructure is absolutely critical and necessary for our town's success and ability to thrive and ability to grow in the ways that we have all deemed important to do so. The Affordable Housing Committee is advocating for Riverside from the three wastewater alternatives that were looked at or the three village center projects that we looked at as the primary one to focus on. Just purely from a housing standpoint, it has the greatest potential for growth, the largest for potential for customers who will actually are ready or will be ready to hook up. It is also a location where the least amount of digging up of current streets needs to happen. So it's the least disruptive to current neighborhoods and settlement. It's a good kind of first step for a phased project as well that we can build off of, and it can also serve as an example and a way to really kind of motivate and show that Jericho can do this. And that we can consider these things both for expansion and for other village centers and tackling the problem that we know really does exist for our other village centers, whether it's wastewater or water. We know that the school has good soils and so that's not a private landowner that we need to wrestle with. And I want to just kind of say again, I know that this is this is a pitch that needs to go to the select board, but I wanted you all to know where we're at with it. But it's also important to think about when we're thinking about regulations, especially for Riverside, is that we really need to bring Underhill to the table, not just having small conversations with them between leadership, but really invite them to be active participants as our neighbors. And as part of the community that's going to be impacted and potentially benefit from this, they really do need to have a voice at the table or a seat at the table, and that's not just that's just good strategic planning. I think it's also really important for community buy-in and will help us to really champion and cheerlead. So. Moving on. Um, so as I said, I think it's not our job to write, you know, how far should this be or what size should this be, this, that, and the other thing. And in listening to the conversations that the Planning Commission has had with David about by law modernization, a lot of you are bringing up the kinds of concerns that we're bringing up at our committee meetings. You're asking the kinds of questions we're asking, you're pushing for the kinds of things that we're pushing for. And so I have a really, I have a lot of confidence that we are on the same page and and really need to be working together to move things forward. And so I think again, what we, what I wanted to do here was boil down some of the questions that we have been asking when talking about some of these potential regulatory changes or regulations. And they all really center around, one, how does this regulation impact infill feasibility? And two, does this impact the cost to build? So some of those specific questions are things like, is this regulation just aesthetic? Can it accommodate a variety of households? In other words, is it exclusionary because of its aesthetic or character demands? Does this impede affordable housing to be built? And that can be either subsidized or market rate housing. We know that there's lots of naturally occurring affordable housing and in order to build affordable, you need to be able to build small, have a small lot, be able to build multifamily. Along the same lines, does this regulation increase the cost to build? And if it does, is there a good justification? And aesthetics and character are not a good justification. Does this regulation make an unnecessary distinction between single family versus multifamily homes? I heard this come up at one of the meetings and was really glad to hear it. The distinction between single family and multifamily exists in some places in really obvious ways and in other places are more subtle biases. How does this impact infill feasibility, which is one of the core questions, but thinking about are you requiring that a structure be placed in the center of a lot because of the setbacks or the frontage or the whatever? And if so, if a property is in the center, then that's going to impede the ability to put an additional structure on it, for example. And then the last one, which I think is is important, is is this regulation necessary? And or is it redundant with federal, state, or natural impediments? And an example for this might be basing a regulation on the height of the ladder that the fire department has. When you have to, for a building permit, get a letter from the Underhill Jericho Fire Department affirming its ability to provide adequate fire protection or noting any improvements or modifications necessary to gain that ability. So why would we regulate based on a ladder? Maybe in a couple of years, they'll get a new truck and a new ladder, and then are we going to amend that regulation? There's already a natural catch there that doesn't need to be part of regulation that maybe isn't restrictive now, but later on will be unnecessarily so. And again, these are all questions that I've heard you all ask. And so I know that none of this is new, but I feel like providing a list and just a rubric that as you're, as you're, you know, wrestling with these things or as you're reading through the draft, you can kind of check these things off. Make that argument. And if it's something that you're not sure about, you know, include this in your pro con list. And there were two, I take note, even though we have a clerk who takes minutes, I tend to take notes because my mind is a sieve, and if I don't write things down, I don't remember them. And two quotes from our committee members jumped out at me as I was preparing for this. One of them was that character does not make it feel easier or building more affordable. I think everybody knows that. The other one was if changes to village center districts make it more appealing for a developer because it's cheaper, should we not expand that to village, neighborhood, village centers, village beyond? And I know that's a conversation beyond the modernization grant, but I think tucking that away, and if you're seeing things and the bylaw modernization that should be extended or could be extended to other districts, making none of those, I think, is important. Sabina, did you want to jump in?
I do. I have a quick question to your second point. The co, oh, I'm sorry. It's your third point. Does it increase the cost to build? So where does the Affordable Housing Committee come down on things like renewable energy, right? Because we all know that 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 adds to the cost of building, but it also pays back in dividends to the user of the building because the energy costs are lower over time. And so you're you're paying a little bit more upfront, but you're getting a significant savings over the life of of the building. So I'm wondering what you're all's opinion on that. And and I'm not, I think we've I'm not saying that it would necessarily be a regulation, but I wouldn't want I wouldn't want to discourage a builder from adding renewable energy technology if they wanted to, if we said, no, you can't do that because it's going to make it too expensive. So anyway, I'll stop there and maybe you can answer my question.
Yeah, I think that there's a couple of things. I'm trying to commit them all to memory because I can't say them all at the same time. One is that the caveat here is the question is, does this increase the cost to build? And that's a question that should be asked. The next question is, if so, is there good justification? And so maybe the argument that you're making is part of the justification discussion that you all as a planning commission have. And one, do you, do you want to regulate and restrict what can be built? Versus incentivizing for those who can afford to include whatever kind of renewable energy that you're suggesting, for those who can afford to include that at their initial build, a first time builder, let's say, a first time homeowner. Do you want to exclude them because and regulate them out from getting their foot in the door and and building a small home here? Or do you want to incentivize builders who can afford to do that and create a structure in which they are really incentivized to do that? I don't know. That's a conversation for the Planning Commission to have. I think the Affordable Housing Committee thinks that there is absolutely a space and a place for a family who, you know, have enough money to make a down payment and they want to build their first home and slowly build on it and, you know, start with a couple of rooms and then build on more and eventually add solar panels and do this, that, and the other thing, but aren't going to be able to start out with all the fancy things. I I don't see why they should be excluded from building, but I I do I do hear the balance and the importance. I understand the long term savings. And I think that there is a way to incentivize where possible and not restrict for those who can't. But you want to add? Yeah, go ahead.
You know, I think and many of the most energy efficient homes or the homes that use less energy are small homes. And I mean, the idea that we have energy, you know, we permit a sixty thousand square foot energy efficient home, but ban small multifamily housing is sort of a sort of, it's a comical contradiction. And I think to the extent that we can permit smaller houses and attached housing, which have, you know, which are have common walls, which are the most energy efficient walls. You know, we have state building standards and, you know, I think I would focus on that. One, you know, an example of something that adds significant cost, which is purely aesthetic, is the requirement that power lines be buried. I'll give an example in Jericho Center, there's fifty homes in Jericho Center. Half of them are on the other side of the street from where the poles are. It can cost an enormous amount and an enormous amount of money to bury the lines. The lines already crossed twenty five times in Jericho Center and having, you know, another, you know, having the twenty sixth line be buried. Neither improves aesthetics. It doesn't improve the resiliency of the grid. I mean, a power, a line from the pole to a house, if that goes down, it affects one house. It doesn't attract doesn't affect the grid. And I think, you know, there's plenty of people with a lot of wealth around town with power lines that aren't buried. And, you know, I just assume see them start burying their power lines on Stunkalo and Nashville Road and Barber Farm. And let the people who are trying to build a small, less expensive home, you know, in a village center not be required, half of them not being, you know, half of them are going to be required to bury their well, they would all be required to bury their lines, but having a bury underneath the road is very expensive. And we all know infill housing is more expensive than multifamily housing. And that that's an example of an aesthetic requirement that I hope you'll review.
Well, and I think that, you know, ultimately there are, there are different kinds of developments. There are different kinds of builders. And perhaps the idea is for these questions to spark a conversation. And from that conversation, you identify what is the, what is the key thing that we are trying to what is the key impact that we're trying to have? And does limiting someone trying to build an A D U or someone trying to build a home under two thousand sque, two thousand square feet, does limiting them? Wow, I know. I don't, in some circles, that's big. Does limiting them to only being able to use certain kinds of energy sources have the kind of impact that you're looking for at a cost of adding one smaller, more affordable home and perhaps a lower economic family to the neighborhood versus maybe having a if you're, if you're developing, you know, ten units or I don't know what, I don't know what the solution is to the question, but I think that, I think that those kinds of questions and understanding where the balance is and where you all want to draw the line on what you want to restrict and who you want to restrict. Those are important conversations to have. And so Sabina, I I didn't answer your question because I don't think there is, I don't think there is an answer because I think that, I think that it's a bigger without a specific regulation in front of us to hash out, then all we can do is really talk about what what the goals are. And from an Affordable Housing Committee goal, we want to make sure that there are opportunities for folks from all socioeconomic backgrounds to build as many different types of houses as they can dream up and be part of our community. And I don't think that that means that there isn't room to also talk about renewable energy and protecting resources and and those things can all happen together without excluding the other.
One of the obstacles to solar is the requirement that houses be directly facing the road as opposed to being able to orient to the sun.
I'm gonna move on to the, to the next topic. But does anybody, before I move on, does anyone want to ask anything else or engage in any more conversation around these?
Yeah, this is Susan. If you want to take questions on this as you go along, is that?
Go ahead.
Okay. So first of all, this is so helpful. And thank you very much. And I'm, I'm really excited for Heidi to see this and to, you know, watch the video, read the minutes because she was exactly challenging David in the last meeting to constantly go back to the goals of the town plan and and the planning commission. She was challenging ourselves like let's make sure that we're not getting lost in the weeds and that we're reminding ourselves of what our goals are. And for you to have articulated them here, I think is great to have a matrix that we can compare against as we go along. I agree with you that it feels like the Planning Commission and the Affordable Housing Committee are on the same page philosophically, logistically, generally. And I think you two in the room deserve a lot of credit for that because you've effectively brought information forward kind of in the right format at the right time, and that has helped us learn a lot and develop, I think, a more informed and balanced perspective on what we want to do. So with that, you mentioned one thing in the point about the difference between single versus multifamily. You mentioned that sometimes there's a subtle bias. And in our last meeting, we talked about this. We were kind of like, well, what's the difference? Two, three, four, five, you know, isn't it kind of arbitrary? Like, what are the things that we're really thinking about there? So do you have an example or that you've either noticed or that you are aware of that exists in the regulation or that we should be guarded about in terms of a subtle bias? That the, that the policy applies when it's looking at a single versus a multifamily house other than obviously the table of uses, which is a huge acknowledgement of a bias.
Yeah. I mean, the, the first, the only one that jumps to mind immediately is are some of the the drawings and sketches of examples that all either are single family detached or designed to look like single family detached houses suggesting that we somehow need to hide multifamily houses that row houses aren't preferred. That's just one example off the top of my head.
Okay, that's, that's, that's a perfect example.
The map that David showed didn't show row houses or anything that looked like multifamily housing in terms of this Lego map. The whole idea of gentle infill to me is offensive because we have neighborhoods of single family homes and we're saying whatever we're going to do is not going to look different from a bunch of single family homes. No, we are, we're adding housing and it's going to look different. When we say it's gentle infill, we're, and and David repeatedly says, well, you won't be able to tell difference between this and a single family home. But no, it's not gentle infill. We're talking about housing, concentrated housing in the village centers. That's the town plan. And when we say, well, you're not going to notice it, that is a bias to a single family housing.
Right.
They use to, these are three story apartment buildings in Jericho. In Jericho.
Um, okay, and then I had another question, which I'm gonna save for later. Go ahead.
Okay. All right, so the last thing um that I wanted to address was one of the. One of the few um specifics at the end. I can't remember which meeting it was, um, but at the end of talking about Riverside and combining district uh character based. Uh districts three and four. David uh proposed a map of what the new Riverside Village Center District would look like. Um, and at the end of that, um, he said. Uh, that he'd be open to any suggestions about broadening that. Uh, map. So I have suggestions for broadening um that Village Center District. Um. And so just to remind you, this, I'm skipping ahead, but basically what's in purple there is what he was gonna combine. Um, character, which is. Combining all of character district four and most of character district three, but not all of it. Um. And. I I think and hope that one of the plans. Um, in the future is to apply for a neighborhood development area designation. Um, and those designations help reduce, just reading from. Uh, the description on their website, uh, help reduce the time and cost of state permitting in areas within easy walking distance. Of state designated centers, whether converting a barn or wing of a house into an apartment or developing an entirely new neighborhood. And I think that's important. We're not just talking about developing an entirely new neighborhood here. Um, we're also talking about um these designations being important for supporting. Um, and facilitating infill. Um. In order to uh be eligible. For a neighborhood development area designation, you need to be within a quarter mile from the state designated Village Center boundary. Um, and so this map here is from one of David's talks, I think during the town plan. Uh, where he drew the kind of quarter. Um. Quarter acre boundary. And when he was proposing combining um. CB uh three and four, he talked about how if you go bigger, that means your neighborhood development area designation can be bigger. Okay, and so, um. It seems like we'd wanna set up a broader area uh for that.
Oh, wait. I just have to stop you there, SJ, because I think factually, whether he said that or not, that's not correct. So. And because. So CD, what we do with CD three or CD four or our individual zoning map. Doesn't really affect this neighborhood development area quarter acre, quarter mile thing. Because this is based on the designated Village Center as the the in the state boundary. So there's sort of two separate issues. We would, we would need to. Change this and maybe you you said this or I missed it, but we would need to change. The state designation boundaries. And then. Make that potentially make that bigger so that the neighborhood development area could be bigger. So it's not related. Okay, not related to three, three or four. It's just related to the state.
That I'm making is that the. Most permissive. Regulations should. Be throughout what a future neighborhood development area designation is. So that we can take most advantage of that future designation.
Okay, yeah, got it, got it.
Susan, you're absolutely right and I I. I think I did switch them in the way that I was talking about them, but the intention is. If we're going to aim for this designation, then let's make sure that the underlying uh. Zoning permits us to take advantage of this the best that we can. And so we're talking about. Uh, a quarter of a mile from the state designated Village Center boundary. And so. In this map, which is really hard to see and I apologize, um, but if you remember from your previous, um. Uh, previous presentations from David, um, this doesn't. First of all, the purple is the um proposed Riverside Village Center District. It does not include all of what is in the Village Center designation. Um, and I'm gonna make some arguments to extend. Uh, both to the Village Center designation and beyond it. Um, first of all, one here is the Creekside Neighborhood. Um, and so that's the little, that's the little cul-de-sac that's right across from, well. Not right across from the market, but just after Raceway. Um, they can see the market from their front yards. Um, they'd be close enough to hook up to any new infrastructure. Um, they. They are, you know, spitting distance to Route fifteen. Um, it seems. Uh, like that would make sense to include. Um, Jerry Hill is number two. Um, Jerry Hill is within walking distance of the market and. Cathedral Square may really wanna hook into any new infrastructure that might go in there. Um, and that would provide a much needed opportunity for them to expand. And I imagine, um. A new wastewater project, but also a neighborhood designation may help them to do that and may make that a more. Um. Feasible project for them to consider for more senior and accessible housing for Jericho, which we desperately need.
Can I interject with a clarifying question? That's for being informal. You you you're saying you're you're showing this as a like phase two. Not, not in the. Or or are you thinking that this is part of the bylaw modernization grant?
I think that as part of the bylaw modernization grant. This new Riverside Village Center District needs to be bigger than what is in the purple.
Okay. And and these three places are the. Where where the committee thinks it should be expanded.
Yeah. And again, this is, this is. In theory, this is some of the most permissible. Building. Zone uh regulations. And this is the prime area. Part of that is because we've got that big chunk of undeveloped land. But part of it is also because this is one of our biggest opportunities for infill. And so if we're going to, if we're going to have this permissive uh. District. Um. Then let's expand it and take advantage of it.
And what's happening, say, north of Jericho Center is enormous. Lots of land are being consumed for luxury homes. You know, NPUDs that are based on three acre lots. So you got twenty seven acres. Being chewed up for eight homes. Uh, or, you know, thirty something acres being chewed up for eight homes with forty bedrooms. Um. But right now, that's the only thing that can be built there. And so we're, you know, once, once that land is gone, it's gone.
So I think including those two neighborhoods, uh, the Creekside Neighborhood and Jerry Hill. Um, they kind of seem um like obvious additions. Um, and. Including anything that was already in in character district three makes sense. But I'd also push you to consider extending all the way down Raceway to that first bridge just past the church and the townhouses. Um, that, that part of Raceway doesn't transition into more your more rural. Right? That part of Raceway, again, there's a church, there's a row of townhouses. The other end of Raceway has the bank, a dentist. Um, it is the proposed uh connection between both village centers as a walkable. Uh, what's the word? Non-motorized.
Multi-modal path.
Multi-modal path, thank you. Um. It already has some of the most densest uh residential. And it has some of the biggest opportunity for infill potential. Um, we have the water, the river there as a nice boundary. That makes sense to already kind of. Uh, use as a natural boundary there for that. Um, and there's a lot of open land down Raceway that's already common land. Um, and it'll be maintained as such. Um, so. Development is limited. Um, and it is primarily limited to infill. Um, but again, let's make that infill as uh. Permissible and feasible as possible.
SJ, um, I'll be interested to see what David think, how, what he says about this um idea. I think it's really interesting. It seems logical. My understanding, though, of where he. Was thinking about the purple boundary had less to do about residential distinction. And more to do about commercial and mixed use. In that. When we were, I guess it depends on how he winds up redlining dimensional standards and density. But my, my, uh. I I I think in his, I don't know if it was the last meeting, but when we were looking at the. Tables of, and I don't think it was dimensional standards. I think it was table of uses. They were identical between the village. Between the purple and the red. So the residential building opportunity. Sort of on a surface level appear to be the same, and I think the devil's in the details and I would want to verify that that's really true. Um, and I think he was leaning toward actually removing any kind of density. calculation at all in his recommendation for both the red and the purple so that. The lot size minimums would basically be the same. The dimensional standards would basically be the same. If anything, the purple. Will have probably heavier mandates regarding road network and. Some of the more, you know, those phys- some of those like physical town villagey things that might actually make it more expensive to. If you extended that to the one, two and three. So I'm not sure. I get what you're saying, but I think we have to. Mm, mm, make sure that that's the result that we would produce. Because I don't have an objection to what you're suggesting at all personally.
Yeah, and I. Just to, so this is just showing the extension down to the church and the townhouses and that first bridge there. And also wanting to highlight that. Uh, this. Um. Uh, ba 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 ba, that these are kind of the bounds of the potential wastewater projects as they might be phased over decades. Um, and so keeping that in mind, and I don't know what, where you all will land in terms of. Um. Mixed uses, having home businesses, um, you know, we've got a farm stand there. Like, I don't know what. Um. Where some of those distinctions may be, and I know that there was some um talk about that, and so considering that. And again, if, if it's not. The way it, the way it looked was that this village district versus village center district. Was kind of a transition zone and that. There would be, um. There would be some differences in in residential building, and if that's not the case, then that's great. Um, so I think that that's, I think that that's kind of where, well, I know that that's where we've left it. As a committee until. Um. Until you all get further, further in the process. And I will, um, I will send, send these to you and and Susan, I was absolutely thinking about Heidi the whole time.
Yes.
Yeah.
Um. You guys thought at all about how we could connect. Certain. Um, like you used, used the word earlier about, or no, Chuck used the word about leverage, about the road policy. You know, you have this leverage. Um. Where we could connect what we're doing with the zoning with other kinds of policies, like, I don't know if it's. A tax credit policy or impact fees or. They're sort of zoning related, but frankly, we've never really dug into them. They, they're always the domain of. Somebody else, it kind of seems like, but um, I was thinking about. You're, you're saying like, how do you make it cheaper to build? And if there would be ways like, okay, let's say we all agree, we get a new map. And we get new zoning to also tie that with. And oh, by the way, if you build housing. For moderate income and below in the Village Center District, then your property tax will be discounted. Twenty five percent for five years. I mean, I don't know, I'm just making that up. Um, I'm wondering about pairing at some point. Something like those kinds of incentives to maybe empower the zoning to do more than just be. Regulation, but to actually like put your money where your mouth is. That would be really helpful because.
And yes, we have, we have definitely talked about that.
So in the last, the last three years. All of the home, all of the single family homes sold in Jericho for under four hundred thousand dollars was built more than forty years ago. And many of them were built with an incentive from the town of four years of no property or school tax. Uh, that ended in the uh mid sixties when White Flight repopulated. Um. Repopulated Jericho. In every town plan since two thousand and eleven, there has been. A plan to change the impact fees. It hasn't happened yet. Uh, today, you can build a single family home of sixty thousand square feet and you pay lower impact fees. Than if you were to build a fifteen hundred square foot triplex. With three five hundred square foot apartments, which is, I think, reflective of the values that Jericho has had in the past. You know, the, the Affordable Housing Committee is putting forward, developing a proposal that says there should be no impact fees. Uh, for homes of less than twelve hundred square feet. And for homes above twelve hundred square feet, it should be scaled based on the uh. Based on the square footage.
How, how much is the impact?
The impact fee is for uh is about, for a, a single family home, it's about twenty five, twenty six hundred dollars.
Uh.
Also, I believe my, my amateur reading of the impact, the state impact fee law. Is that impact fees can only be charged for something that benefits the neighborhood where the impact fees are being charged. What happens in Jericho's, from what I can tell, it just kind of goes into the general fund, which is not what, you know, it it should be. The impact fees for charging for development to build sidewalks or to take over the road or something. You know, specific to that neighborhood. So I do think.
They're municipal wastewater.
Work for municipal wastewater, but it needs to be, it needs to serve the homes that have been charged the impact fee, which is my reading of the state law. So I believe what we're doing currently is not consistent with state law. But this has been in the town plan in two, two thousand and eleven. Susan, I think you're right. It's just nobody really kind of takes ownership for it, but there should be. We should eliminate impact fees for uh smaller units.
Okay, so. It sounds like you guys are maybe gonna work on that, maybe gonna bring something more formal to together. Um.
Yes.
From, from our, my point of view, I think if there were additional incentives that you wanted to develop. That tied into these districts that would maybe make them more palatable. Not that they would be only for the, not that they would be only for these districts. I understand that, but maybe as a way of. Um, just enhancing the appeal.
I think that's a really good idea. Let's show some courage on that. I mean, that's an example of something. That should be a reserve fund. We put money in the reserve fund for conservation. Projects when they come up. And we should do one for this, for homes that are, you know. Uh, smaller than a certain threshold.
My concern. Is that the audience you're.
My concern is that the audience you're voting for still cannot compete. Against the other people who also want to live in smaller homes. And have more funds to make that happen. There's such a need for housing. And there are lots of people who want to downsize or want their first home or want to move out of a condo. That don't want a big home. Their content in a small home, and those are the people who have bought. The homes you were talking about that are under four hundred or five hundred thousand dollars. And most of those went for forty, fifty, sixty thousand dollars above asking. Or forty, fifty thousand dollars above what the bank will lend them. So.
What we need is more starter.
But the, but the people that you're. The people who are the most in need have the least money. So you're building starter homes and the people who will buy them are not starting. So we, we need all the houses, but I'm not sure mathematically. That paying the impact fee is going to result in the, the people. The audience that you're looking for getting into the houses that are built. So I'm not saying don't do it. I'm saying yes and. But my concern is, is what I just said. My other concern is that. Without a, without a mechanism or a recipe like Habitat for Humanity has. Where you're targeting the people and you're capping the price and you're limiting the applicants of. You know, the audience that's allowed to be shopping for, for those homes. It's, it's really difficult to hit that target audience. And unless you, like I said, unless you go through an organization that already has built that recipe, it is very difficult. So Burlington has tried to do it, other communities have tried to do it. To mandate that one in ten houses in the development has to be affordable and sold at a certain price. And still they can't, they have not built their own recipe so that the people selling it who have built it then are sitting for months with an empty home. Because there's no strict set of paperwork that's legally, legally viable. They can be used to bring in the right fire.
I, I share your concern. It's, it's really hard to do with this amount of money. You, you don't want to then put a restriction on what the selling price could be. You know, basically, I believe the whole situation, not the only solution, but I believe the whole situation is benefited by more smaller units.
Totally. No, it's definitely.
And, and this isn't something that costs a town, really doesn't cost a town. Well, in terms of the impact fees, it doesn't cost a town any money because we're not building any homes less than twelve hundred square feet. Um, right now, so it's, you know, it doesn't cost us anything. Um, in, in terms of the actual incentives, uh, you, you may be right there. You know, that, that, that maybe there ought to be, you know, some additional um. Some additional consideration kind of supporting fewer units that have, may have an affordability dimension to them. I do think that a five hundred square foot home or six hundred square foot home are what, you know, is, is always going to be cheaper. Than a three thousand square foot home. Um, and even if it is someone with money who's moving in there, they are vaciating a space.
Yeah. Yeah, no, more. I'm saying yes and.
Yeah.
Yes and.
Good.
More is, supply and demand is the course.
Yeah.
And then there's all the other um.
And you're right, some, addressing those other things is outside of our scope and our capability. And, but what we can do is get out of the frickin' way.
Yeah.
Where we can.
Yep.
Um, did you want to say something?
Oh, I was, did you see my face?
Yeah, I did.
Hi Ralph.
Yes.
Well, it's just, it's so complex because I was just thinking that, yes, twelve hundred square foot home, no impact fees. But that doesn't, to your point, doesn't make it necessarily affordable because you could have like this, you know, super high end kitchen. And ten thousand dollars appliances that's going to drive up the cost. So it's just, for me, it's just not the size of the home. Yes, it's a starting point, but there's so many other variables that I think.
And we can.
Go into that.
We can fix them, we can control them. We can, we can try to incentivize and uh smaller. We can make sure that the opportunity to build smaller, to buy a smaller lot exists.
Yep.
Maybe that impact fee instead goes to using uh renewable energy in that build. Maybe, you know, I mean, there's, there's, and who knows, and that's beyond, but really, uh, it, it's.
We were currently penalizing multifamily housing with our current structure.
Right.
Why?
Nor maybe.
Two homes of the same stuff, that is, one with three apartments and one with one apartment. Uh, why, why should one be much, you know, why should the triplex be that much, much more expensive than a single family?
Um, I also threw impact fees out there as the only, only because it's one that I'm, I'm aware of. And I was, I think, you know, be interesting to see if there's other things that um, other towns have done. That are more policy related, that create incentives. And I, what you started with is, is investing in infrastructure like wastewater and water. Is like, you know, primo, primero, primero uno or whatever. Um, to.
Um, wait, before you guys go on, S J, can you pull that mic closer to the, to where Chuck is?
You bet.
Come join me.
Well, you don't, yeah, either way, but we can't hear Chuck very well.
Susan.
I mean, then.
I mean, the biggest, the biggest incentive is going to be infrastructure. And the only town body that hasn't agreed that the priority is wastewater for Riverside is the Select Board, and they're the ones in charge. They really, we need to really impress upon them the need to. Decide that that's the priority and move ahead in that direction. There are so many entities from the fire department to the planning commission. To the, you know, everybody, the schools, Underhill, who could all start their work. If we knew what, if they knew what the priority was.
But I will get on my, on a little bit on my infrastructure reserve fund soapbox to say that. Um, infrastructure doesn't stop with Riverside wastewater. Um, an infrastructure reserve fund, uh, when a, when a small neighborhood well dries up. And they don't have the money on hand to address it immediately. When someone wants to, someone in one of the, the village centers down here wants to hook up to the water that's available. Or to the gas line. Um, I mean, there's, there's lots of, there's lots of different examples of, of ways that we can invest for certain to support. Um, individuals and neighborhoods and communities within our town. But Susan, are we at time? Is that what you were about?
No, I was gonna say circling back to the neighborhood development area and then this probably is the last comment. But we don't have other public here, so we have until eight, ten, I think, is what we were going for. But for the neighborhood development area. Yeah, for then.
When she runs the meeting, it is out the door. Go ahead.
Um, the neighborhood development area has been on my radar for kind of a long time. Because I started working on it somewhat in the background with Catherine Sonic before she left. And we were looking at a neighborhood development area application for Riverside. And started to kind of get our minds around what do we need to do. And having infrastructure wastewater, at least in the planning stages or like a preferred alternative. Is one of the first milestones. Um, but now, you're probably aware, this, the legislature passed um, new. Rules that they are going to revamp those programs, those designation programs. And then also the Act two fifty changes. So we'll talk in a minute about our town planner. But one of the things that I want to put on the radar of our new town planner relatively soon. Is making sure that we are leveraging the Act two fifty changes as benefits to the town. And related to that is making sure that we're in a good position to apply for neighborhood development area. When, whenever they change the program, like that program might go away, it might get combined with something else. It's so, unfortunately, it's in a little bit of a state of flux, but I just wanted to assure you that. That's a definite like yes from me, that that's a great program that Jericho should be able to take advantage of. And we need to get all the ducks in a row so that we're ready.
Yeah, and, and I, yes, to all of those things. And as it pertains to the bylaw modernization grant, I want to keep those. That program or whatever that may turn into in mind as you're thinking about regs. So that we can take advantage of it without having to go in and amend um. A certain district or, or make some amendments to our regulations to be able to fully take effect. Uh, or take advantage of um, the benefits that come with that designation or something like it.
Yes, and that is very forward thinking and strategic, so I think that you're right on the money there.
Those are all your comments. That's it for this time. Chuck, anything else to add?
That's it. Reflected the committee's discussions.
Do you have any questions for them?
No, that's very clear. Thank you.
Sabina, do you have any other comments or questions?
No, not now. Thanks.
Yeah, really appreciate you putting that together.
Yeah, whatever urgency we had before, I think needs to be, yeah, doubled based on the, you know, the recent events. And just the hundreds of people that have lost their homes, but, you know. We need to really monitor our patience in all this. And, you know, see what we can do as soon as we can do it.
Okay, we'll then move on to the next topic, which is a discussion of the town planner hiring process. So, um, I know there were a couple of documents, Susan, that you had shared with the group. Um, I don't know which one you wanted to start with, or if Sabina, you can put them up or.
I can, I can put them up. Just tell me which one you want me to do first.
Um, I think probably the letter first. Um, so. Much thanks to Wendy and Sabina who worked on this. Basically, the process is that the town planner job was posted. A couple of weeks ago. Linda has officially transitioned to her new role as of July first. Um, the process that the select board and the staff have outlined. Uh, was communicated to me that the position is posted. There are at least seven applicants. That staff is going to do first round of interviews to screen people. And determine which of those are qualified candidates, ones that we would seriously consider. And then there'll be a second round of interviews and that's when um, two planning commission members would participate. As part of an interview team, and the specifics of that have not yet been determined. Like, would it be a group interview? Would we get to interview them? Would it be sequential? I think that'll all depend on how many candidates there are, what the schedule is, who's available. But in any event, that, that's like a second round of interviews of qualified candidates for the planning commission to participate in. And then the select board does a final interview. Um, the other thing that is not yet clear is will that second round team be making a recommendation to the select? And I was trying to remember when we hired Linda, I think that's what happened is, I don't think the select board interviewed anyone other than Linda. Because I think the hiring team, which at the time was basically John Abbott, David White. Who was the interim planner and me, made the recommendation to the select board to hire Linda. And that, and John Abbott had outlined a different process and we had the whole planning commission interview. I think three, three people who this team had said was qualified. So it's kind of similar, but it's a little bit different. I think they're very focused on trying to be efficient and fast. And um, so that's the process that they've outlined. The timing is that first round interviews theoretically should happen soon. I think they were starting to schedule those with those seven people. Second round interviews, when two planning commission people would participate would be to be determined. And but they're hoping for late July, early to mid August. So potentially done by August fifteenth. And then putting one or more people to the select board soon thereafter. So the dates got a little bit fuzzier, but I, I think that they're really trying to have somebody selected in the September timeframe. So in the meantime, we're independent on our own. So that's the process. Any questions about the process? Okay, so I looked at that and um. Chuck actually advocated that the planning commission be more involved and more involved sooner. And I looked at the job and Wendy had also commented to me and Sabina that the job description. Is really not necessarily as current. Because the job description was focused on developing a town plan and now we have a town plan. And that the job description could really use a little zhuzhing up to get really good people excited. About doing really good things in Jericho. So I, I took those comments to heart and said that what I wanted the planning commission to do. Was to develop a list of what our priorities were. And to frame them in a way that would be very enticing to a candidate. And to share this with the one or two or however many finalists there are. And it would reflect what the planning, since all of us are not going to necessarily meet with the person, would reflect what our priorities are. And also in a way, try to sell the job to a really good person, which the current job description doesn't quite do as much of. So Wendy had the idea, which we really liked, of putting it, framing it in terms of a letter. And um, so that is what we drafted. And um, we shared it with all the planning commission members in advance of the meeting. And that is what Sabina is showing here on the screen.
Is it big enough to see in the room?
No, you probably make it a little bit bigger.
Okay, I can't tell, but I will make it bigger.
Maybe Wendy, if you don't mind, since you're physically there and you really drafted the bulk of it. If you wouldn't mind just walking us through it. I don't think we need to go through word for word, just kind of highlighting. What some of the intentions were.
Right, so the, uh, the intention was, well, it was to create um, like a welcoming vibe. To our, our new future colleague, um, sort of a set the tone for a collaborative relationship. Um, and then the other sort of major component was really calling out the town plan. And the priorities of the town plan and what we hope our new colleague will be able to help us accomplish. And like using that town plan as the North Star that guides all our work. And, you know, reiterating that it's just, it's not a document that we wrote and we're putting it up on the shelf. It's a living document. And we need uh, our new town planner to help bring it into fruition. Um, and. The other piece of, I think the tone of the letter is very action oriented. Is that um, we highlighted several priorities from the town plan. And what actions that we want to see happen.
Is that, do I have it in a good spot now for you?
Yeah.
So I, I, I think, you know, all of, like, your, the edits that you all made were like spot on. Because it's like you added some really good um, specificity about what we're hoping the town planner will do. To help us achieve the goals, and I think that's important.
Let me know when you want me. Let me know when you want me to switch this. I can't see you and I can only see this. So tell me what to do and I'll drive.
Well, since the three of us worked on it, we're familiar with it. And then Sarah had a chance to take a look at it ahead of time. So basically, my, my plan is that after this evening, when we reviewed it and we felt like, yes, this represents the group sentiment, then I would forward it to the select board and to call in Linda, who are basically running the search. And I'm not sure or exactly when it should be inserted into the process. Part of me thinks right away and part of me thinks maybe at the time that the planning commission is in those second round interviews. Because then we're really delivering our message, ourself, to our candidate. And that, I was kind of favoring that.
I, I can see that where it might be. I'm leaning towards introducing it earlier, actually. And I think in part because I think it, I think it helps candidates to prepare and present their kind of best selves and provide examples to the first round interviewing committee to, to help like focus what they're going to be talking about.
Yeah, I agree.
And provide examples that address our priorities.
Okay, that makes sense.
I think it's also representative, the, the plan itself is very representative of who lives here and what has informed the plan, the attitudes and philosophies of the people living in the town. And I think if, if I, when I have applied for jobs, it's always very important to learn about a company. Like, the best advice I was ever given was, don't apply for a job, apply to a company. And it's really hard to do that with a town. There's no mission statement, there's no historical performance and other things that you can go back to to try and understand who you're going to be working with or what, what the attitudes and goals are. And this really informs those topics for an applicant, so I feel that sooner would be better.
Susan, did you get any feedback from Eric or Chris or Heidi?
Uh, no, not specifically on the letter. So I think we're, we're, we'll go with it as it is. Yeah, I mean, I'll probably just run it by them and make sure they didn't have any issues with it. But I will forward it to the select board, I think, in time for their meeting on Thursday. I don't know that they need to discuss it. I think they didn't seem to have any objection to us doing it. I think they're probably appreciate it. Uh, there's nothing controversial in here. So if they wouldn't, you know, if anybody wouldn't agree with what's in this letter, we have much bigger problems.
Yeah, agreed, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, all right. So then, then the next thing, the next item was, since all of us won't be interviewing the candidate, it'll only be two of, one or two of us. And then we don't know who those one or two will be because it depends on the schedule. Like, if I'm, if it's after I'm back in Vermont, I would love to be the person and other people's schedules, so we'll wait and see. So we thought it would be helpful for us to at least have a set of interview questions. So whoever the PC members are, any one of us could be asking the same basic questions. Uh, so again, thank you to Wendy. So she drafted the questions and then I edited them a little bit, barely, just a little bit. And we sent these out ahead also, and I didn't receive any objections or uh, oh, Heidi did have one, Heidi did have a good comment actually about, so I know she reviewed it ahead of time. And I can, just let me find. Uh, she said, we should add which experience working with multiple quote-unquote bosses, where you have a job supervisor and you also have an advisory board. And then you have a funder or a grantor. So in this case, with the town planner, we have the planning commission. We have the town administrator that they report to, we have the select board. We have the regional planning commission that directs a lot of their work. So I think that would be a good question to add in, something about that. Does anybody else have any other questions they would want to add in?
I don't think I have any other questions that I'd want to add, but I do think like this, it kind of goes back to the format of the interview. It is, are the planning, is this an interview just for planning commission members? Or will this also be an interview that has Paula and Linda and planning commission members? Because there's a lot of questions. And so if they, if they also have their questions or they just, or they want to do different questions than what we have here, I think we might have to prioritize.
Right.
Yeah, we don't want to be redundant and we also don't want to bore an applicant to tears by asking them the same things everyone else has already asked them.
So I, I, I would like to, I would, like, before we finalize the list, it would be helpful to see what questions, like, they're going to ask for during the first round interviews and what questions they want to ask for the second round. And if we're doing, you know, different interview or the same, same time as them.
Okay, so I'll try to suss that out with them a little bit more and find out what they're, maybe I should share this list, the questions with them and see where they are, where the overlaps are. This might help them prepare their own questions. What do you think about that?
Yeah.
Um, and what did you think about the scenarios? So Wendy, you had, had left like a list, so I was trying to come up with some specific things where we could suss out the person's abilities and skills in different kinds of things. So leading a public meeting, GIS and smart growth. I sort of asked those questions trying to think about, when you have a person who doesn't necessarily know exactly a skill, how resourceful are they about figuring out how to fill in their own knowledge gap? Because I think a planner really has to do that a lot. And the question about researching another town that's already implemented a zoning change, I thought that would tell a lot about the person's tenacity, ability to research. Do they just look at somebody's town's website? Do they call the planner? Do they think about all the public engagement that happened before, during and after the change was implemented? So I was kind of like really trying to give somebody an opportunity to shine, but also giving us an opportunity to really see where somebody potentially has weaknesses in areas that we need.
Mm-hmm, right, if they have, they have the applicable experience.
Right. So if none of the interviews happened before our next meeting, we could also return to this in a group. Otherwise, I will just share it with them and will probably use this as a baseline. But if anybody does come up with any other good ideas for questions, you could forward them to me. Okay, good to go.
We have a, we have a question from the public. I'm going to allow it because we have time.
I want to know who's doing the recruiting. You know, is, is this just a passive exercise of putting an ad in the paper and we interview, you know, whoever shows up and pick the best one? I mean, who's calling Dominic? Who's calling the planner in the Upper Valley? Who's, you know, who's going, uh, plumbing the depths of the UVM network of people who want to return to Vermont? You know, who's calling, I don't know, Cathric Sonic? Who's, you know, who, who's really recruiting? You know, we're assembling a team to accomplish a plan that has a five, that has an eight-year fuse on it. One of the years will be done before this person, you know, kind of comes on board. So what are the things that we need to add to the team of executives that we have in town? There is no mention in the job description about infrastructure and wastewater, you know, or housing. I mean, uh, the, 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 the select board has gone ahead and replaced two of the four top jobs. I, I, I don't think, you, you know, e- either one of those jobs wa- was really kind of focused on those things. You know, in many towns, a planning director is involved in infrastructure. We, right now, I don't think we have that expertise. You know, I think that, you know, I think that's an important consideration, but we should be recruiting. You know, who's, who's job, who is out there recruiting? Catherine says we don't need a town manager, so who's doing it?
Um, well, I, in answer to your question, I have reached out to a few individuals myself. I know Peter Booth has. Uh, I know Sarah and David White, Linda, Heidi. You know, a couple of other people have reached out. We've done some work in LinkedIn. We're, we're, our group here is not the recruiter, so I don't know what anybody else has done. But I do know that I asked all the planning commission people to work your networks. And I know that Linda feels pretty good about the seven candidates that came forward. In terms of the priorities around infrastructure and housing, the letter that we just brought up, letter to hall, to colleague that talks about planning commission priorities emphasizes those things a hundred percent. And that was really the point, was to supplement the job description with a little bit more meat of what's currently, what we think this person needs to work on starting day one.
Great.
Any other discussion on the topic of town planner hiring? No? Okay. We will move on to reporting out on events, liaison updates, et cetera, et cetera. Um, I can give a liaison update for the development review board. There is no update. So you can cross that one off the list. None for you either?
No.
Okay. I think we just got an update from the Affordable Housing Committee about what is a priority for that group, so that's good. Um, Susan and Sabina?
The, our UVM interns for the Conservation Commission are, um, I think getting towards the completion of the ash, the right-of-way ash tree inventory. Um, so that's a project that has been a long time coming and we're very pleased that it's coming along as fast as, as it has this summer.
Um, this is, uh, so Sabina really, Peter Booth went and attended the most recent bicycle pedestrian committee and talked to them about the, about raceway road being part of the connection from the corners to Riverside. And could they start thinking about some improvements to that sooner instead of waiting for, before that sidewalk is built? And then Sabina provided them some resources to that. So we are, Sabina and I still continue to try to help them take a look at the existing 2015 plan and think about updating it. Um, and they are doing a crosswalk inventory, so they're looking at all the crosswalks and the conditions and safety and researching how to make them better. So that, that committee seems to be gaining some momentum. Um, and then I was also going to mention at the select board meeting recently, I saw that they appointed Joe Flynn to the Jericho Community Development Corp. So there's some hope that by having more people and more energy there, that, that group will be able to get some traction. And Chuck mentioned at the beginning, and I did want to tell the planning commission that the select board has been, is considering adopting Walnut Lane as a public road. And the town attorney suggested that they adopt a policy before they adopt a road so that every future request can be evaluated compared to the policy. And so I weighed in in email to the select board as an individual, not representing the PC. Um, but I weighed in as an individual to them and I pointed out that the town plan on page thirty-eight actually talks about reconsidering the town's stance on never taking over roads. But I reminded them that there's tremendous leverage, policy leverage in developing a road policy and gave them some thoughts about that. And I, um, let them know that I concurred with Chuck's comments about the HOA restrictions and that, um, I concurred also with, uh, Joe Flynn's comments that he had made at the same meeting. So I do think that we want to track what they're going to do with that. They seemed in a hurry to adopt a policy, but I had told Peter that I thought if they wanted the planning commission to weigh in at all on the policy, that we would be willing to do that. So that would be future business, in a future meeting. And the last thing about other stuff is just to remind people that we signed up to do the farmer's market on August twenty-ninth. So hopefully we'll have some high-level summary of the zoning changes. Probably the, uh, what we already know from David is what we would use at the table. So I'll be asking around for people who want to go and participate, but I'll do that through email.
Susan, are there examples of road policies from other places that you can refer us to, to look, look at?
Um, I could ask. I know that actually Paul, the select board charged Paula with that task.
Okay.
And they were working with the town attorney also. So I can, I can find out what they, what they determined. Um, what I don't know is if they actually adopted a policy at their last meeting because they haven't, I didn't attend and they hadn't published, published minutes yet. So I don't know that we're, we'll really have an opportunity to do so, but I think, um, I don't, I don't, that's all.
Interesting. Always interesting. Okay. Um, any other reports? No? Okay. Moving on to other business, what other business have we got?
Yeah, I just want, well, so this road policy might be future business for us, we'll see. And then I just wanted to make sure that people were aware that the select board organized a task force to reimagine town meeting. And that task force has produced a detailed report and it's available to read online on the town website. And the reason why I wanted you guys to take a look at that is to think about how we can do the best, how we can contribute the best to the development of the budget and the development of the capital budget. I have not yet read the report myself, so I don't have an impression on that. But I think that we probably want to have that as a future, um, agenda item to look at that town meeting reimagined, the budget process, and what does that mean for us?
I think they're going to do the budgeting stuff pretty soon. I, I think that I had been sort of skimming their minutes before I posted them so I could stay on top of the conversation. And I think what I gleaned from their comments was that, you know, the budgeting process was going to happen pretty early, like almost in the early fall. Yeah, when they would start, so, um.
My apologies for mentioning that. I should have, I should have brought that up, another business. So, but yes, you're right, Sabina, it was in early fall in September.
Wendy, are you on that committee?
I, I attended a couple of meetings, but it was really Maria, um, from the DEI committee that, that did the bulk of the work with that committee.
I see.
I, I was on that committee.
Yeah.
But I don't know how appropriate it is for me to give a, um, to read out her summary of that, uh, here.
I think, I'd say probably not. I think what we should all do is read the report, but have it on, uh, potentially our agenda for the sixth.
Yeah, and if, if anyone does want to reach out and, and has questions about the report or, or wants to talk about it some more, I'm happy to do that offline. Very helpful, thank you. Okay, any other, other business? No, okay, then we will move on to our next item, wrap up and planning for our next meetings, which are August sixth and August twentieth.
So last I heard from Linda, she was not a hundred percent sure that we would have the red line from David by the sixth. Um, but she's working on. The kind of Plan B schedule if we don't have it until the twentieth. And um I think she was still feeling pretty confident that we'd be able to hit our hearing dates. With the select board for, before the year end, because she had already built in a decent amount of slack into the schedule. Um, I'm gonna really hope that they get it, that we have it by the sixth. And I was also going to suggest that we, to David, that we plan for two planning commission meetings with the red line and not just one. Because we have to warn the hearing. And I think receiving the red line for the first time, discussing it and warning the hearing when the red line basically has to be frozen. All at once is not realistic. So what I'm gonna, what I am going to try for is that the sixth is the first pass on the red line. Then interim discussion in between, and then the second red line on the twentieth where we would warn the hearing. And we would maybe have an, asked to see if we could have an additional meeting in between if we need that. Um, and then we'll also see if we have anything to discuss about this road policy. And then we'll also have a slot to talk about the budget and the town meeting reimagined report. So SJ, if you would like to join us for that, that would be helpful.
Sure.
Okay.
So, so it is possible that we would get a red line for the sixth? I'm wondering if we can ask, can we ask David that we have. A sufficient amount of time to really digest that, because the, there's going to be, that's going to be a. A monster of a document to read. And I'm just, you get it Friday to discuss on Tuesday, for me, that's not enough time.
Okay. And I think that's why I was looking at it saying that. One meeting isn't feasible, so if we had from the sixth and then our next meeting is on the twentieth. And potentially one, an extra meeting in between. Where he's, he's there, he's not there, doesn't necessarily matter. I think his assumption is that there, there's nothing, I don't know, I haven't talked to him directly in a long time. But I think what he's been, he's like leading the horse to water. So every meeting, his presentation is this is what we're thinking, this is what we're, you know, what do you think about this? This is what the recommendations are going to be, this is what we've kind of come to consensus on. I think in his mind, he's going to think the red line is going to have no surprises. And it will just be basically implementing what we've pretty much already discussed. But I think I know our planning commission and think that that's probably not how it's going to go.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that, uh, based on how the town plan.
Yes.
Process.
Yes.
Played out.
Right, so if we met the sixth and the twentieth or the sixth thirteenth and twentieth, does that seem like that would be? A good enough time for us to sink our teeth into it? I mean, if it's not, if we're not ready, then we just, we're not ready. We've set all these deadlines for ourselves.
It's so hard to say without seeing any version of it. I mean, ideally it would be so much shorter.
Right? So much.
Less. Complicated. Yeah, I really wish he would let us see a draft. I feel like this is very uh. Feels very much like the town plan. Where what was delivered was, didn't. I'm getting ahead of myself. It does, we, you don't, you can't predict the future.
Right, right, and, and while we gave feedback, sometimes it's difficult to, to um, to know if it was heard and.
Yes, or how, or how it would be reflected. I think it was heard.
Yeah.
But maybe not, um, maybe the priorities or the understanding of how simple we wanted things to be was not understood. We'll have to see.
So I guess it sounds like you agree that one meeting is probably not realistic.
Oh, it's not realistic at all.
Yeah, okay, all right, so I will definitely deliver that very clear feedback.
And I don't know whether this is just me, but I'm, I'm wondering if we could have two documents. And I understand this might be like a ridiculous ask. One is the actual red line, which I find visually exhausting to read.
Same.
And then just a separate document that is just his proposed. Um, changes, so that we have both. We can see, we can compare it to the original document. And then, but, but we can also just read it straight through.
Yeah. I mean, if he's using Word, then that we should be able to get that no problem, you know, it's just a.
That, that would.
Um, so I, I'll ask for that also, basically the red line and the clean.
Yes, yes, and that would be my hope is that unlike, again, not to harp too much on the town plan, but unlike that experience. There are not illustrations and other things mixed in. There will be some tables.
Mm hmm.
But that it would be not a giant PDF document, pretty easy to present, because it's a Word document and in those two forms.
Yeah, I guess what I should also ask in them, if they're thinking of. Delivering to us only the pages where there is our edits, red line? Or like an entire new zoning document? Cause ultimately you have to change the whole thing, but.
Yeah, I think, you have to see the whole.
Yeah.
Yeah, I want to see the net result.
Yeah, okay.
Will it be posted?
Will it be posted? Uh. Because it's a draft, I don't know.
The draft town plans were.
Yeah, yes and no. Not every draft version was posted.
Okay.
But yes, there were drafts posted. Certainly whatever we, when we warn, there'll, there'll be a document posted. Right, but you may not see the first version. No, I know, I, I agree. That's why we're thinking we definitely need two meetings.
All right, so that's all I had for.
Okay, well, that is a good list. All right, um, do we need an executive session team?
I don't think so.
Feels like no? Okay, because we're ready to adjourn. Can I get a motion?
I move that we adjourn this meeting.
Thank you, Sabina.
I'll second.
Oh, Wendy, you too, Susan. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, okay, eight thirty-nine. Nice job.